So this is the Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 meeting of the Eastside Meadow Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to call the roll. So Mr. Punderson.
Here.
Mr. Torsha.
Here.
Mr. Kingston.
Here.
And I am here and I am Russell Denver. So the approval of our July 13th. Well, before I do that, I'd like to indicate that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT and ask if there's anyone in the audience who might also be recording the meeting and if so, would you please raise your Zoom hand? And so that you can be brought into the meeting and identify yourself. Jamie, anybody?
I don't see any.
Okay. So now I'd call for the approval of the July 13th, 2021 meeting minutes. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
A second, but George.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Everybody said aye at that time, it's never happened before.
What's that?
Everybody responded with an aye, that's never happened before. You're learning.
Jonathan, first item of business, please.
Yes, item number one, SPRW 2021-29, request for site plan review waiver for Twin Meadow Home, an interior design showroom with retail sales at 45 Baldwin Street, assessor's parcel ID 27-11-C in the industrial zoning district. Applicant Alexandra Tremblay, 45 Baldwin Street, Eastside Meadow MA.
So is the applicant available?
They're muted.
Oh, there you are. Hi. So you're muted.
How are you?
Hi, how are you? Thanks, thanks for joining us remotely.
Yes, not a problem, thank you for having us.
So tell us a little something about you, your business, hours of operation, that type of thing.
Sounds good. So we currently are actually sitting in our shop in Long Meadow, on Long Meadow Street by Americans Cleaners, across the street from Berkshire Bank.
Yeah.
Storefront here, it's about 2,000 square feet or so. And we've outgrown the space, so we're kind of expanding. We're doing it under a different TBA, but it's still the same parent company. And we do interior design within people's homes and we also sell retail sales furniture, so you can, you know, walk right in and buy anything off our floor. In terms of hours of operation, we're planning on operating 10 to 6 daily. I think we took, what we closed on Mondays. And then in terms of traffic volume, we expect it to be fairly minimal. It's, we're not a really heavy advertising company, it's more targeted towards our kind of current clientele. But there will be, there will be definitely an uptick in our current customer volume. We have probably 6 to 10 walk-ins a day where we're at now. And being at the end of Baldwin Street, we don't expect random walk-ins, it's going to be more targeted. So we expect probably.
So we lost you, we lost you. Yeah, we can't hear you.
What was the last thing you heard me say?
Between 6 and 10 customers per day or so.
Okay, yes, so yeah, we, so currently that's what we have and that's because we're on a pretty busy street with a pretty busy presence with the dry cleaners in the salon and a sidewalk in front of us. With Baldwin Street, it's going to be more targeted customers. So we're, with the expanded square footage, we're also expecting an uptick in the amount of people coming there. We're thinking an average of 20 per day is a fair average to expect.
All right. Questions from the board?
This is the same building that the brew pub is going into. Do they have enough parking for both businesses? That's another question.
Bethany?
Sorry, I believe so. There's parking in front as well as on the side.
And I think primarily the hours of usage might be not exactly the same, I would suspect. But I know what you're talking about. So actually, so just so you're aware, so we did permit the micro brewery about three or four weeks ago. There were neighbors who appeared, they're concerned about the traffic that it might cause going straight up the hill and, you know, instead of going down Baldwin Street.
Yeah.
So we asked the micro brewery to do everything they can to work with Bethany, who is the planning director, about proper signage to at least try to dissuade people from going into that neighborhood and using Baldwin Street when they exit your location. So maybe you and the micro brewery could work together with Bethany to see what's the appropriate signage, so.
Sounds good, and we've been working hand in hand with Joe all along, he knows about tonight. And we mentioned to him that, you know, anything we can do to alleviate that because we know what that's like, you know, in our personal residence and in our business, people kind of miss using streets. So, you know, maybe a sign such as, you know, please use Baldwin Street for exits, something down on our walls would help alleviate that. And we, I mean, most of our customers we know, I think for the most part, they're, it'll be pretty respectful. That's kind of what our expectations are and we're hopeful for that.
Yeah, we also understand that there was a, there was access next to the building prior to people cut through and try to go to the other businesses from. And we put in some Jersey barriers there to prevent all of that access.
Okay, great. So Bethany, did the letter go off to the abutters of the private way, explaining what they needed to do?
No, we did put up a sign or there's a work order in for DPW to put up a sign for the end of Baldwin Street, right on the corner of Baldwin and Maple Street. But that, I think they would be best served to hire a lawyer. I think that falls in kind of a legal landscape that I wouldn't feel comfortable advising upon.
The abutters of the private, of the private way?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns from the board?
George, this is industrial, that's street?
Yeah, yes, it is.
And we allow retail sales in industrial?
Yes.
Okay, good. Make it clear, that's all.
It's IGP that's restricted.
Pardon me, industrial garden park?
Park that's restricted, this is street industrial.
Yeah, good, good, good.
Hearing no further discussion, do I hear a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve this item or this site plan waiver by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So I guess one last thing, when do you anticipate opening?
We're looking to open October 1st, assuming the insane lead times of the furniture and home building industry doesn't prevent us from that. But it looks pretty good. If we don't open October 1st, we'll push back to probably mid-November. And for the reason for the jump is we don't want to then push back and then have to push back again. We think that mid-November would be the very latest, but we expect October 1st. We've got a fair amount of build out to do and the build out is cosmetic only, so.
Filling it, we have to put art on the walls, you know, get it set up.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Take care.
Anything else from us, do you have any more questions?
No, we're all set.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much. All right, take care of everyone.
Thank you, next item. John?
Oh yeah, sorry. SPRW 2021-30, request for site plan review waiver for the Step Sister Cafe within Brew Practitioners at 45 Baldwin Street, assessor's parcel ID 27-11-C in the industrial zoning district. Applicant Georgina Brunton, 45 Baldwin Street, Eastside Meadow MA.
So I'm going to ask Bethany a question. So is this because of, so we've already done the micro brewery and this is for the cafe?
Right, they are doing kind of finger food items. So this is like the business that will be providing that food service.
Thank you. So Georgina, you're, we can't see you and you're muted.
I am unmuted now, can you see me now?
We cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, hang on a second, I got a new phone and a new computer at the same time.
Okay.
All right.
There you are.
All right, hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well today, thanks, how are you?
Good, so we know about the micro brewery, so tell us about the cafe, tell us how you're going to interact.
So I did send over the floor plan or the site plan for the building and I have the very tiny spot, as soon as you walk into the building, it will be kind of zoned off a little bit by a bar, a tall bar that's like an ordering counter, if you will, where it will be the ordering system. And it'll kind of block off that corner, so it's very separate. It is, I did send over a copy of the rough menu as well, so it's going to be very light bites, a giant pretzel, a few sandwiches, a light flatbread, a couple of options in that, and then two dessert items. My hours will be from 4 to 8 on Thursday and Friday and then 12 to 8 on Saturday and Sunday. So limited hours.
Yeah, okay. Questions from the board? George? You're muted, George.
Yep, yeah, sorry. I understand this is light fare and so on, but technically this is a restaurant. Why are we doing it under a waiver versus a special permit?
Bethany?
I think Kevin Duquette was seeing this as more of a booth rental than a restaurant in itself.
I think we're treading on an edge here personally. It's a food service operation where people will be eating there while they sip their beers. I don't see how it is not a restaurant, even though the food service is light. And I would hate to set a precedent for this sort of thing personally. And how do you feel, Mr. Chairman?
Ah, I, well, thank you for raising this. So this is really kind of new territory, really. I mean, it's because it's, I wouldn't classify it as a bar with food.
The special permit for the brewery does mention food, so I think that was the other reasoning behind doing the site plan waiver, but.
Can you say that again, I didn't hear at all.
Oh, the special permit for the brewery does mention that they will be serving food. So I think that went into our reasoning behind the waiver instead of a special permit.
I guess my feeling is this is a separate entity within there. It's not the brewery that's doing it, they're getting somebody else in there to do it. And again, you know, this is the way it's starting, two years from now, the applicant could sell the business to somebody else, no special permit in place. I, I'm reluctant, personally, I'm reluctant to treat it as a waiver, but that's, that's me.
Other members?
I like the idea, I love the kind of food you're going to be serving, I like the idea of it. It's just a technicality, really.
Pete?
I'm going to have to agree with George. Only because the possibility of precedent being set. And once you lose the strength of the wording of the, you know, not of our bylaws, you're, you've got a problem. And I think that weakens it.
So Bethany, do we know, is Kevin on the call or in the meeting?
He was not able to make it.
No. So Georgina, I don't know if you're following this.
I am, yes, I am, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, so when, when does the brewery anticipate to open?
We are looking at mid-August.
Okay.
I believe like the 14th, 15th, which is maybe the second weekend.
Yeah. So we meet again on August 17th? Because I would like to get some clarification. I don't want to do a temporary because she would then do a lot of work to prep for that and then maybe not get the special permit. So that's really not conducive to getting things off the ground.
What would be your thoughts, Russ, excuse me for interrupting, what would be your thoughts? Why she wouldn't get it though? I think it's just a matter of paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, there is none. I mean, I don't, I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate a problem with it. It's just the process of filing and everything. Bethany, any suggestions?
I guess one of the other options would be to amend the brewery's permit to include mention of her business and a condition that if her business were to move on and another rental or not booth rental, but another restaurant entity came into play, they would have to amend it again. I think that sounds similar to how some of our gas stations, convenience stores operate.
I, that's a possibility, but that would still require a hearing and we might as well just give her the special permit, hold the hearing and do it the proper, the proper way. We're talking about I mean, we could hold a special meeting, I suppose, but I'd rather just do it the right way, personally.
And then the special permit will go along with that area too, in case somebody else came in to operate if Georgiana didn't, didn't stay there.
Yeah, it could then be amended to have a different owner.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just quickly weigh in. I would say I'm a little, I'm split. You know, I think it's, you know, an excellent concept and, you know, I had a chance to review it this afternoon, but I am concerned about precedent because that's some of these more difficult cases we look at. You know, we're always mindful of being careful where we set precedent. So that's what's definitely giving me some pause.
Georgiana, when is the brewery going to open?
We're looking, well, right now we're slated for August 14th, which is a Saturday.
Okay, so we meet on the 17th, so there's a three-day lag right there. You could be completely permitted three days later and have it done correctly.
Right, which would mean not being open on opening weekends.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes.
So what's the, what is the posting requirement for a special permit and the advertising requirement, Bethany?
First, advertisement has to go out 14 days before the day of the hearing.
So where are the 20th? So conceivably, we could have a special meeting prior to August 14th to act on this item.
Possibly the 10th, Mr. Chairman.
How does everybody feel about that?
I'm completely open with it, that's fine.
I'm in town, I'm open for it.
Okay. Okay. So Georgina, it's actually going to, I mean, be beneficial to you that we do it correctly, so.
I understand, I understand.
So there's no questions before that time. If we could do it, even if, even if we did it on an off Tuesday, if that's okay with people, I would suspect that would be the only item we would have on our agenda. So we could be in and out in less than 10 minutes. So I'm going to urge you to work with Bethany just to get, just to get all the appropriate paperwork in so that we can do it correctly.
Okay, okay.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to withdraw this without prejudice.
I'll make that motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the request for waiver without prejudice.
Nice second, nice second that, that's great.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Just put in, just put in there that we'll meet on a special session if we have to, gladly.
Well, I mean, she, she's heard all four of us say that we like the idea, we just want to do it correctly, so.
Yeah, and we've already approved the site plan for the brew pub with, with food. So there's no need for a new site plan, okay?
Yeah.
But we do need special permits.
So by roll call, Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you, thank you, Georgina.
Thank you, I'll reach out to Bethany.
Thank you, next item.
Yes, SPRW 2021-31, request for site plan review waiver for Jalab customer t-shirts, a home office at 19 Silver Fox Lane, assessor's parcel ID 65-50-4 in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Joshua Laberry, 19 Silver Fox Lane, Eastside Meadow MA.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
So just tell us a little bit about you and your, and your business plan.
Yep, so Josh Labarre, I'm just looking up, looking to start up just a small custom t-shirt and apparel line from my house. Basically to be just an online presence, using social media, kind of word of mouth, just doing custom graphics on t-shirts, hats, things like that.
So are you going to have any of the equipment at the property?
Equipment, yes, the equipment is a 15-inch by 15-inch, basically iron. And that, that's all that's needed, everything else is pretty much custom ordered from various vendors online.
And there will be no commercial vehicles there?
No commercial vehicles, correct.
And no customers going to the property?
Correct, yep, so that was it. Explain to me after the application, I just, I wasn't sure what to fill out on there. But yeah, that's not a problem, using shipping or drop-off. I would imagine most of the stuff I'm going to be doing is, will be somewhat local, so you know, if there's a business or something that wants that, I can definitely drop it off and make sure that no customers are coming to the house.
Okay, all right. Questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the site plan? Do I have a second?
Fine, John.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Best of luck to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
All right, item number four, SPRW 2021-32, request for site plan review waiver for Point Break Financial, a business offering financial services at 200 North Main Street, Suite 1, assessor's parcel ID 25-4-9 in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Anthony Grizzetti Jr., 200 North Main Street, Suite 1, Eastside Meadow MA.
Hi, Mr. Grizzetti. We can't see you or hear you.
All right, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but we can't see you.
All right, one sec. I guess I got to put that on, it's not working right now. As far as you can, sorry about that.
Oh, there you are. You're connecting to audio.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah, phone wasn't set up for it yet. Been a resident here for almost 10 years. Partner is in another accounting firm currently in town. Just looking basically to start a financial services through this new business at the same existing office and everything there. Will be utilizing the same space and all the existing equipment and everything, so nothing too particular there.
Questions from the board members?
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, because that was pretty quick, Anthony, thank you.
It was longer to get the video up. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
We're efficient, you know?
Thanks guys.
Next item.
All right, number five, A&R, Case A&R 2021-04, Windsor Lane, Shaker Road, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law to reconfigure lot lines of existing land of the CYVAD nominee trust into new parcels. V3-3R, assessor's parcel ID 20-24-3 on 42,395 plus or minus square feet and Lot A, assessor's parcel ID 20-9-0 on 1.258784 plus or minus square feet located in the Residence A and Commercial Zoning Districts. Applicant John H. Davis Trustee and Stephen A. Davis Trustee the CYVAD nominee trust PO Box 15709 Springfield, MA, continued from June the 15th and June 22nd, 2021.
So I see Philippe Cravot on, but we can't see you or hear you, Philippe.
Hello, so I don't believe this is mine.
No?
The next one, I'm here for the pride.
Okay. So you're, you're, you're early for one.
Early, one early.
Okay. So is there someone here for CYVAD nominee or CYVAD trust? So while we're, while we're, while we're waiting for Mr. Martin to come in. So Bethany, can you give us a little background on this, please?
Sure, so there's been conversations from the applicant and the planning board on this matter. Just pulling it up. Regarding the access and if there is sufficient access because there are wetlands all along the edge of the property that's in question, which would make or put the access into question because you can actually physically access the parcels if you needed to build on them. So I think that's kind of the question here is if there's frontage that's sufficient to access the sites.
So George and Pete, I think you raised the issue of an illusory frontage, if I have that term correct. You've seen some of the back and forth on the emails, do you want to add anything to that?
Not really, I did see the suggestion that the frontage on Pease Road might be sufficient. I don't know what the frontage is there. I have walked that property many, many years ago with the prior owner and I don't remember, I don't know whether there were statutory wetlands there or not, quite frankly. There was some issues with the previous owner there, but in any case, I'm open to hearing what the applicant has to say.
Pete, do you want to add anything before we hear from the applicant?
Well, I believe this, this is regards to the comments made by Mr. Leveque, am I correct on that?
No, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, yes, I think that he got some, some reaffirmation from Mr. Leveque if I'm not mistaken, but I can't visually picture any place on Pease Road from a corner of Peas and Shaker up to the other existing homes where there's access to it. I just don't see it.
It's right between number 347 Pease Road and 339 Pease Road, I believe.
Right, but that, that goes into a big hill right there, doesn't it?
Well, the, it doesn't really, there's, it goes up slightly. There was a question of whether there's a small intermittent stream that's coming down the hill there. Right now, you don't see it because it's being utilized by the abutters, okay? Okay, so it's not like there's this empty lot. The abutters are, um, utilizing it, shall we say.
It's doing tree bark and his neighbor.
Yeah, between the whites and his neighbor.
Right, right, right. It does exist. Like, I suppose as you go in there, I mean, I grew up on the land. As you go in there, it does, it does, the hill doesn't come into effect till you take a left and then the hill comes down sharply from the right hand side.
Yeah, and there's a pipeline and.
Yeah, the pipeline comes down the hill.
A not a not currently used pipeline, but it's still there and it's still, um, being considered as a pipeline for future use, last time I heard.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening. Uh, I was told, and I'll ask Bethany, that Mr. Peter Leveque was, uh, authored an email that was submitted. Has that been shared with the members? Okay, so, uh, I wasn't at the first hearing, but I met with Mr. Smith and Mr. Granger and Mr. Davis. They summarized for me particularly Mr. Kingston's concerns. And so we had Mr. Leveque look at the issues with regard to the questions that were raised. And in his summary of his memo was that he visited the site and he determined that there was sufficient frontage along the north side of Pease Road between Shaker and a residence at three ninety seven Pease Road. And along this frontage, a driveway could be constructed immediately adjacent to the westerly property of three ninety seven Pease Road under that three ten CMR ten point five three three E, a limited project for the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. He did point out that there are significant wetlands there and they would need to be crossed, which would require permitting from the East Song Meadow Conservation Commission, the Mass DEP and the Corps of Engineers. But a driveway could potentially be permitted outside of the riverfront area of Freshwater Brook to access the upland portion of the lot. He also told me on the phone that he felt that it could be accessed from Shaker Road, but that would then involve the freshwater brook and he would advise against it. He then explained to us in this memo that, you know, the DEP would require that you look at alternate access before impacting wetlands. And that's on three ten CMR ten point five three three, uh, small E, as an alternative policy would be required. And, uh, he concluded that the alternative access that has been proposed off Windsor Lane, which would not incur wetland impact, and thus thus be the primary choice for access into the lot. Uh, so, uh, with that background, he is of the opinion that, um, that the A and R plan that submitted for access to that lot is legal and should be sufficient. I don't know if that's too much, uh, technicality there, but he also provided, uh, with his memo, copy of the CMR regulations from the DEP. And it makes sense that you would use the least restrictive and having the least impactful, uh, property to avoid impacting wetlands.
Mr. Kingston, do you have comments?
Uh, I I understand the the, um, the argument and I had forgotten about that access from Pease Road. So if it does have sufficient frontage, then I would be willing to accept that. Yeah, I'd much prefer if they put a cul-de-sac in, quite frankly, like we make everybody else do. But, um, if they, you know, legally, I think they they have leg to stand on with the A and R.
Any other comments?
So I just have a question. Where's the house going to be sited? In behind the houses on Pease Road, then the long driveway that goes in and access to top of the property?
No, I think.
Sorry. No, no. So go ahead. Sorry.
This was explained to me, um, the Pease Road piece is strictly for frontage purposes.
Oh, okay.
From the other end.
I got you. You're gonna come from the other road then. Okay.
Yeah.
I got you. I'm clear.
I I concur with that. Yes, that that answers the Punderson.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to endorse the plan?
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Do I have a second?
John will second it.
I will. I second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So item number six, case site public here, case site twenty twenty one dash four thirteen through twenty five North Main Street. Request for site plan review for a proposed supermarket and gas station at thirteen through twenty five North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID twenty seven dash thirty eight dash zero and twenty seven dash thirty seven dash zero, twenty seven dash thirty six A dash zero, and then finally twenty six dash one forty eight A dash zero on a sixty three thousand six hundred ninety plus or minus site in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Pride Stores, two forty sixth Cottage Street, Springfield, MA.
So, um, before we get too far into this, so, um, Pride, um, and Bethany, correct me if my history is is off a little bit. But Pride initially filed a special permit on this site back early spring. Uh, subsequently, they withdrew that and they filed for a site plan review or site plan approval on this. Subsequently, there were some concerns raised on whether it was appropriate to have this come under a site plan versus a special permit. And I will allow Bethany to kind of explain to the public the options that are open to the planning board to determine whether we wish to move forward with a site plan review or a site plan or a special permit.
All right, let me just bring up my pages here. So the the zoning enforcement officer who makes the zoning determination had initially ruled this as a site plan review due to the extensive redevelopment that's occurring at the site. However, there are, there is a standing special permit for the gas station at thirteen North Main Street, which does include two conditions, um, basically saying that it's up to the special permit granting authority, which is the planning board, whether or not there's any changes to the plans. If the planning board will require an amendment or an extension or a new special permit filed for that use. There was also a question about the size of the convenience store or supermarket as it's now labeled. In our zoning bylaw definitions, we do have a definition for convenience store, which says a small retail establishment no greater than two thousand five hundred square feet. So this also helped the zoning enforcement officer make his determination. However, there is a note at the top of the definitions in the zoning bylaw, which states that the definitions are provided strictly for clarification and are not to be interpreted as permissible or allowed unless stated in the table of uses within the zoning bylaw. There are no size requirements for convenience stores or supermarkets in the text of the zoning bylaw. So that interpretation is up to the planning board, whether you see this as a supermarket or convenience store use.
And is, am I correct, in a previous planning board, did a special permit for the gas station slash convenience store at the corner of Shaker and Chestnut? That was done as a special permit as well?
Uh, yeah, so tech, most of the time there is special permits. That's a combined use, which is also permitted as a gas station and a convenience store.
Under a special permit.
Correct, yep. And the planning board has also in the past at the other pride location on six six hundred eighteen dash six thirty four North Main Street, um, they did a site plan review and a special permit. So it's possible to do both as well depending on the planning board's, uh, pleasure.
So based upon all of that, I think the first thing that we as a board need to decide is, do we wish to be treating this as a under site plan or under special permit?
I have a question through the chair, Russ.
Yes.
Didn't we, hasn't it been determined that a grocery store cannot have a gas station as part of its business? It has to be a separate entity? In other words, the grocery store is the grocery store, the gas station can be sited there, but doesn't it have to be independent? Such as all the all the accounting procedures and all the gas pump procedures and all that? Doesn't have to be self-contained? And completely separate from the grocery store if it goes as a grocery store? Did we determine that in last meeting?
Um, I I don't recall doing that. Bethany, do you, can you add to that?
No, I don't think our zoning bylaws specifically say, um, they, we do have the combined use of the gas station and the convenience store, but we do not have mention of a combined use for a supermarket and gas station.
Right.
Just to add.
No.
Okay.
Discussion among the board. So, uh, the first thing the board needs to decide is, do we wish to do this as a site plan? Or do we wish to do this under a special permit? If we were to decide to do this under a special permit, we would have to vote to allow to which to allow the petitioner to withdraw if they wish to do so without prejudice and refile as a special permit. So I put that on the table and look to for comments from the board.
Doesn't the existing special permit say that upon modification of the existing store configuration that a special, the special permit has to be amended?
That is, that is the language.
This should definitely be done under a special permit.
George, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I I agree that, um, it should be done under special permit. Um, I think, given the site and the impact on everything around it, that a special permit is the appropriate way to go. I think upsiding the store to try to, uh, convert it into a grocery store so as to avoid a special permit is is inappropriate, that it really is a convenience store, quite frankly, no matter how big it is. And we should treat it as such.
John, do you want to add anything?
I would. I would concur with the rest of the board. I've been hearing some good points thus far. You know, looking over the project, it it would seem to me it would be hard to make it seem like it's a supermarket, even though there's technic, I guess they've used technical verbiage. But I think that a special permit would be a safer route to go versus the site plan.
So with, so, um, I will give Mr. Cravo an opportunity to address this specific issue. So if you wish to do so, now is your time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Just to, you know, kind of explain the, why the special permit was withdrawn and in lieu of the site plan application. It was due to that, the verbiage in the definition of a convenience store and the fact that there is a gas station under site plan and there is a supermarket under site plan. And this is a six thousand square foot, which exceeded the, um, the twenty five hundred square foot number that's in the definition. And also there's, um, you know, beer and wine sales as well that will be transferred from the existing, um, retail at the corner to this store as well. So it's a little more than, it's a little larger than than, you know, your typical convenience store, which I think was the angle that.
Yep.
We're coming at it from.
Thank you. So, um, on the, on the decision on, uh, so I guess I'd like to hear a motion first that this board wishes to proceed with this as a special permit, which would require withdrawing the site plan application and refiling as a special. So I'd like to see if there is a motion for that.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Just as a technical question, do we need to, um, open this up to the public before we vote or?
No, because it's, um, no, I would say no.
Okay, just wanted to verify. Thank you.
So so on that motion, which has been seconded by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
And I'm an I. So I guess the next thing is if the petitioner wishes to ask us to withdraw without prejudice, the site plan application currently before us. If that is your desire, we'll see if someone wants to make a motion to do that.
Well, it doesn't sound like it will go through as a site plan application, so I don't think there's many avenues. So I think that, um, we would request to withdraw the site plan application in lieu of a special permit.
Without prejudice.
Without, correct, withdraw without prejudice.
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second. Okay, motion made and seconded on the ability to withdraw the site plan application without waiver. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So, um, Mr. Cravo, we next meet on August seventeenth. So we would hope that Pride would be able to refile everything with with Bethany and the department so that we could hear this, um, at least first step on this on August seventeenth.
Okay. I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
All right, case number seven, case site twenty twenty one dash five at three oh one Chestnut Street. Request for site plan review for the installation of two chart VS one thirteen hundred gallon liquid nitrogen tanks, two thermomax pressure build vaporizers, four thermomax ambient vaporizers, a concrete pad and a thirty thirty five four foot concrete bollards at three oh one Chestnut Ave. Parcel ID eighteen dash one dash zero in the industrial garden zoning district. Applicant ASM Plus Company Incorporated, PO box ten twenty nine Irwin Industrial Tool Company, Dublin, Pennsylvania.
So, um, we know that, uh, as as always, we request comments from various town boards and departments. So Jonathan, can you read in the comments from the police or from the fire chief, please?
Uh, yes, just give me one moment to pull that up. Uh, the, on this case site, the the police department does not anticipate any concerns with the above proposal.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
No, I just emailed you the, it was an email chain, so I just emailed that to you.
Yes, I saw it or I apologize. Have it right here. Yes, uh, the East Song Meadow Fire Department has reviewed the site plan. Sorry. Uh, has reviewed the site plan for three oh one Chestnut Streets, request to install two chart VS one three hundred gallon liquid nitrogen tanks, two thermomax pressure build vaporizers, four thermomax ambient vaporizers, a concrete pad and thirty five four foot concrete bollards. This department does not have any issues as long as the following is met. A permit issued by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, DFS, and inspection conducted by the Mass DFS Code Compliance Division in the East Song Meadow Fire Department as per five oh two CMR five point O permit and inspection requirements of above ground storage tanks of more than ten thousand gallon gallons capacity. And a storage permit issued by the East Song Meadow Fire Department as per five two seven CMR NFPA one chapter sixty three, storage of compressed and chirogenic fluids. Please let me know if you have any other questions or concerns.
So is there, um, a representative from the applicant?
Oh, yep, here we have a hand now, sorry. Oh, yep. Here we have a hand now. Sorry.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. How are you?
Good. How you doing? My name is Harry Water. I'm the facilities manager at Danex American Saw. Uh, I would like to say thank you to, uh, to all the members of the planning board and taking up our site plan. And as you guys all know, we've been here since 1915 and, uh, uh, believe it or not, we're the largest solid manufacturing plant in America. And, uh, just I think second to China and, uh, right now we are China and Far East Asia. And what our business is, is doing very well. We are owned by Stanley Black and Ducker. And, uh, would like to, uh, actually, uh, expand some of the operations. We, uh, we have right now about 770 employees. Thinking about adding about another 60 to 70 more employees than this, uh, in this, this operations here. And, uh, we really need this approval from the planning board so we can expand our operations. And nitrogen gas in this building is, is a heart of the operations.
Okay. Questions from the board members?
Uh, have we received all the permits that the fire department requested yet?
Bethany?
No, I think they wrote that email on Friday. So I don't know if that's something the applicant would do after approval from the planning board, or if they would need to show planning board approval beforehand to receive those.
Contingent upon contingent. So we, we could do a contingent vote. So you would receive a contingent upon receipt of all those things required by the fire department.
That, that, that is, that is correct. You guys, we need approval from the town before we can go and apply for the state purpose. Yes.
Any other questions from the board before we open it to the public?
I've, I've always gone on the guidance of, um, law enforcement or, or safety such as the fire department. And they've made the conditions that all the permits have to be in place, but they're fine with it. So it passes with my, with, you know, in my mind, that's fine.
So I'd like to open the, the public hearing on this. If there's anyone in, in the audience that would like to be heard, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting? Jamie, do we have anybody?
Uh, no hands yet. Still no hands.
Okay. So not seeing anyone or hearing from anyone.
There we go.
Okay.
One, one thing I would like to say that is actually going to cut down some of the traffic of trucking, which they're bringing the nitrogen to the side because these tanks are bigger. So I don't need to get the tanker coming in every couple of days. It will be at least every maybe one to two weeks. So it actually cut down the traffic on the roads with the nitrogen. Hello?
So I, I see a Thomas Noel.
Yes.
Hi, can you put your camera, can you put your camera on?
I'm gonna try.
All right, there you go.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How you doing the planning board?
We're well. So what, what do you, what do you want to say about this topic?
Well, I apologize for, um, coming in late. I don't know how to do this Zoom thing. It's very new to me. So I'm an old school guy and I don't know how to do all this. So I apologize.
Not a problem.
But I do believe, uh, uh, my name's Tom Noel and I'm from WJ Queen Construction Company and we represent American SAW. We've been doing a lot of work for them throughout the years, built the entire building and we still are right there in East Long Meadow on 94 Maple Street. So we do believe that we have, and I don't think I'm speaking out of school, but we have all the permits. My, my, my office is trying to get on this right now and they can explain the permits for the fire. I think we're in good shape right now. But I can't give you that at this point where I am. So the office is trying to get on and they're having some problems.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I mean, we'll, I mean, we would just make, if we were to vote, we would take a vote probably to approve a contingent upon receipt of all the proper permits is what we. So, okay. Thank you, thank you for your comments. Yep. Anyone else would like to be heard on this matter?
Hope there's no hands.
Okay. So hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So it comes back to the board. The board have any further questions for the applicant?
I, I looked over the site plan documents that I had. Whereabouts on the building is it's going to go actually?
It's gonna go along the, uh, the east side. East side of the building.
Inside the building.
Right. There's already a two, uh, small nitrogen tanks and these are going to be right next to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? So do I have a motion to approve and does someone want to put a condition on that? With respect to receipt of all, go ahead.
A motion to approve, um, conditions would be that all the permitting would be approved and in their possession.
As, as referenced by the memory letter from the fire chief.
Right.
And then we need copies of them.
Yep. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Best of luck to you. So just to get, when you get the licenses, um, get everything off to Bethany in the planning department and we can then move forward from there. Okay. Thank you and best of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Take care. Bye-bye. Uh, next item.
Review, uh, review of Hometown Lawn, 158 Maple Street.
Bethany?
Sure. So this item was reviewed. It was a home office for a lawn care business. Um, it was reviewed in, I think, January of 2021 because there had been some violations. Parking vehicles in the street and that sort. Uh, so this is a check-in. The planning board said they wanted to do a check-in around July to see how that's going. Kevin Duquette said that he has not received any violation notices or he hasn't sent out any violation notices and he has not received any recent written complaints of the property.
So someone who walks there probably three or four times a day, uh, including, I think I talked to Bethany today or yesterday. There's less violations there. Uh, there is still, uh, trucks that say hometown property services there first thing in the morning. There are still supplies in the garage. The amount of activity there is greatly reduced. But it's clear that they're still using the garage as a storage facility for loading and unloading. I, I leave it to you on what you want to do moving forward. Do you want to ask the, um, the, the owner of the property to come in again? Do you want to, you know, say that the violations have been reduced? And therefore we revisit it again. Um, do we want to send a letter from this board indicating that we are aware that continued operations there are in violation? And that we wish to have it resolved immediately? I mean, what's the board's pleasure?
I'm going to recuse myself. I use the services.
Then maybe, then maybe it would be good if you called him and told him to knock it off.
Dave, he's a wonderful guy and.
I'm, I'm sure he is.
Yeah. He did a great job of my yard.
I'm really sure he is, but he sits right on Maple Street, right in front of the high school.
Yep.
As we all know, Maple Street is a very, very busy way. It is, it's a traffic and safety issue, those trucks going in and out. And quite honestly, he said he would no longer conduct the business out of there. And he has not kept his word on that. So. So I don't know, uh, what the remaining two board members would like to do.
Well, I, obviously I think we need to take some action here because we don't want people to say, well, he can do it. I can do it.
Yeah.
I, I think would suggest that we ask the owner of the property to come back in again. And, uh, if we don't get satisfactory answers from that person, that we would revoke the waiver of site plan.
Okay.
I, I would, I agree.
I think we should make it clear to him that if we don't get adequate answers from him and plan going forward, that we will, uh, entertain the option of revoking the site plan.
Bethany, I'll say.
What was that, Russ?
You all set? You understand what? Okay. Um, so next item, Jonathan.
The, uh, number nine, appointment of planning board representative to CPC.
I nominate John Torsia to be the planning board's representative on the CPC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and discussion. All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None. I'll, no, any discussion?
Uh, well, I, I've been, uh, happy to be serving, representing the planning board now for, I think, the last two or three years where uh, in the process of completely revamping, uh, the master plan. So there will be probably I expect by next month or the following month, um, hopefully approval of a pretty substantial master plan, just to incorporate a lot of things. This has kind of been a passion area of mine, uh, serving as chair as well. Um, so I look forward to, uh, serving, uh, for at least the next, next year, uh, on this, on this board that I think, uh, not a lot of people know about, but I think more people should because it's definitely a, um, a great board, uh, and has a lot to offer to the community. Because this is taxpayer funds that you're dealing with, uh, with applicants coming forward.
Thank you for your service on it and your willingness to do so. So by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So we were supposed to have on the agenda also, um, uh, a reorganization of the planning board. So, uh, if people are comfortable doing it, we can do so. So we need to appoint a chair, a vice chair and a secretary. So that's.
I nominate, uh, Mr. Denver as chair.
I second. Okay. I accept at least for one more year. I, I do continue to have very big shoes to fill from Mr. Kingston and I continue to learn almost every meeting from him. So it's a, a pleasure that he remains on the board, helping us all, which is wonderful. And it's also really a pleasure to have Pete Punderson, who is also a former chair of the planning board on the board, helping as well. I know the experience that we have from you two gentlemen is really extraordinary. So, uh, with your continued assistance, I would be happy to do it. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. So I nominate George Kingston to be vice chair. Do we have a second?
There's a second on that. Second, yes.
All right. Uh, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And now for secretary. I'll nominate Jonathan Torsia to remain as secretary. Do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So Bethany, do you want to give a, a quick director's report?
Sure.
Can I make one comment first, please?
Yes, yes.
I thank the chair for his kind comments and I thank George Kingston for his continued service. And, uh, he's just a wealth of knowledge. It's appreciated, George.
Thank you.
It is greatly appreciated. Yep. I, uh, I think I've said the story a couple of times, but I'll be out and about and someone will go, you would be lost without George Kingston. And I go, yes, I would. I freely admit that. So, so it's wonderful to have you to continue to serve, George.
Thank you.
Beth, Bethany?
Sure. Um, a couple of notes here. Our next, uh, meeting would typically be August 3rd, but, um, in lieu of a meeting, we will be having National Night Out. I will be having a table set up. Um, you're welcome to come by if you would like to. Um, just an opportunity to connect with the community after such a long break with COVID. So, um, that should be a fun event. Um, and I want to clarify that the special meeting, um, for that special permit is August 10th. Is that correct?
I think, I think everyone said they would be available for that.
Just want to clarify that. And then, um, I think the town manager mentioned this in her report, um, a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, the DPW and planning did, um, receive funding for Mass DOT for the Shared Streets and Spaces Program. They had a bonus round. So this was more focused on how to keep our streets and paths safer. Uh, we focused on the North Main Street section, which is also the focus area for the local rapid recovery plan. So we will be revamping some, um, some crosswalks, putting in some more signage and trying to make it more pedestrian friendly. All that, the project has to be implemented by December 31st of this year. And it's about $38,500 worth of work. So we hope to have that implemented, um, most likely by October, once supplies comes in.
Great. Um, a member of the town council let me know that, um, our fifth member was, uh, apparently approved by the town council, apparently not yet sworn in. Uh, her name is Cassandra Saraswello, goes by Cassie Saraswello. Uh, born and raised in East Long Meadow, graduated of East Long Meadow High School, bachelor's degree, small business owner in town. I don't believe she's yet hit 30 years old, which is a wonderful thing to do our demographic for our board. Uh, to make it a little younger, which is always a good thing. Um, I'm looking forward to her service. Certainly we'd like to have her on board, you know, certainly for the, uh, the August 17th with Pride. That would be a wonderful beginning for a new planning board member. So, um, I look forward to, to her, uh, joining the board.
Is she the main squeeze lady?
She is.
Okay, good.
Yep, yep. So she, she's aware of how the planning board works, how some other town departments work, how they all work with each other and interact with each other. So I think it's a, she will not come as a novice. That's for sure.
Yeah.
So it's good. Uh, Bethany, any other items that we need to be aware of?
No.
So other than Pride, uh, do we anticipate any public hearings on the 17th of August?
Yes, um, there will be a site plan review for 31 Benton. They have a proposed, uh, commercial building. I think they're just trying to make a little bit bigger space. Um, so that came in on late last week and that will be on the agenda. And we also have, um, two site plan reviews for Deer Park. They're installing a fence. I think that is it at the moment.
All right. Thank you.
When, when is the cell tower coming in?
Um, they're still trying to figure out their best application process. Um, they really want to use a use variance. We don't issue use variances in East Long Meadow. So it would most likely be a special permit. But they are talking to our town council about, um, the possibility of issuing a use variance despite our, uh, zoning bylaws.
So I guess I've raised the issue. So, um, with a very unfortunate ending to the PLH Inc. saga. That leads me into the, uh, where are we with the new solar, uh, bylaw?
So I did draft, um, a couple of months ago, a very rough draft of what, um, solar bylaw could look like with, um, ground mounted solar in residential zones. I'm happy to send that off to the planning board and have you pick it apart and, um, make it, uh, something that you think is the best reflection of East Long Meadow. Um, I largely based it off of the guide that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission came out with this spring. They had some really good, um, tips and advice on what you should and should not include, um, in a solar bylaw. So I'm happy to send that off. This week even and put it on an, an agenda to start moving forward with it.
Yeah, I'd like to have it in front of. Yeah, I'd like to have it in front of the planning board um, for a hearing sometime in September.
Okay, yeah.
Um, you know, I'd hate to get into the situation where someone comes in and kind of beats us to the punch. We don't really have anything in place, so um, the sooner the better.
Yeah, I, I do know, I think uh, Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a a ground mounted solar application coming in, but for an industrial zone, so not, not residential.
Good. Any other business before the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Good night, everybody.
Good night.